Hey, we have nine o'clock. It's Anderson joining in the pledge.
Allegedly, she's applying the United States of America and to the Republic for which the stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first.
Morning, everybody. I want to approve the agenda as presented.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Right. It's approved minutes of this for eight twenty twenty five regular meeting.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Right. Prove employee claims filed with the county auditor for one thousand six hundred forty nine dollars and forty cents.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Right. Prove the employee health insurance report. It's like we're at two million six, which is very good. You have motion to approve.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right. Approve the authorization of a payroll increase for Curtis stocks correctional officer recognizing his years of service.
That's all for union contract?
Motion to approve.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Prove amended resolution twenty five sixty six. And we want to fill us in on.
I can because it was my mistake.
Oh, okay.
I had a typo in it and Amber and Cody caught it. So basically, I'm just requesting the board resend. Twenty five sixty six was the Murphy Miller minor plat, the original one that was August four. And then just approve the amended one with the corrected typo is what I'm asking.
I make a motion for the board to rescind um resolution twenty five seven twenty five sixty six and to um replace it with the amended resolution of twenty five sixty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. You don't need a roll call.
Please.
Roll call. I, Kurtz.
Weiland, I.
Go go I. Thank you.
Prove the tax abatement for the city of Fairbank. This is a property, be a court order that was deemed sent. Transferred over to the city of Fairbank. But I don't have much other than approve it.
I don't know even know what the.
Over four thousand now.
The property of five oh six Patterson Street. And yes, the tax abatement would be four thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and the whole list of everything is attached in this packet.
It was a abandoned dilapidated property that uh oh, say. Well, I need a motion to approve the tax payment for the city of Fairbank.
Make sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right. Uh, approved vacation carryover for Julie Davidson with all the uh upheaval in the uh her uh regions uh reorganization. She's got some vacation. There's no way she can use uh at this point. So we were going use it. Things calm down, but so I need a motion to approve the vacation carryover for Julie.
I'll make the motion. It seems like a good exception to policy.
I'll second it, but I would like to add that we have had other departments that have had um stuff going on in them. And then we did chastise the department heads for not using their vacation and in the past. So we need to kind of.
How much time does she have to utilize once?
Yeah.
It's ten minutes. One week. I know in the past you've approved them. Um, this, that's her anniversary date. It's October fifth. So it states she's going to use it in October or November. I know there's been times where you've put like thirty days, sixty days. So I guess that's up to you guys if you would like to put a timeframe of when it needs to be used. Or how you want to handle it.
I'd like to be sensitive to the reorganization.
Understand what you're saying. I thoroughly understand what you're saying. I'm not going to agree with you at all. I just also know that when we had um emergency operations center that being built, and somebody was not able to take their and this comes available in July, as does the first of the year or the first of our fiscal year, that we did chastise that department head pretty roughly. Um, and it was through no fault of his own because he couldn't use his vacation time. Because the other person was off.
Would it be a good compromise to say that she has to take it by January first?
Sixty days is what Ashley just put in the comments.
Okay. That makes sense.
So we've got vacation scheduled, so. A motion and second.
Favor?
Hi.
All right. Okay, I have some discussion placed on file following the newer management plans. B M T pigs Jefferson County Township, section nine, Porkchopville Farms, three incorporated Frank Fairbank Township, section ten. Entry Farms LLC Fremont Township, section twenty three. H and K Farms LLC site three Middlefield Township. Section twelve. J and K Farms Perry Township, section twenty six. You have motion to place those on the file.
I'll make the motion to place those when your management plans on file.
Second.
All in favor?
That's.
It's the legal beginning of the schedule.
Uh, any of you have a form of permission I stated like to give, which is probably for that now.
We had their meeting to organize the upcoming beach producer or actually cattle and association is going to in conjunction with the council on aging hosting fundraiser. So I'll be eighteen and I've been to one thirty, I believe. And when you can go through little donations and then get themselves either a big sandwich or a hamburger. With homemade potato salad and beans. At the Sears. Walk away.
Sean and down the down.
Yeah, there's got one here. Uh, Intercigs Executive Committee, we're meeting this week. Uh, we're going to talk about the fiscal year twenty six budget. Uh, got audit conversations coming up, so we're ready for that. Uh, Intercigs Regional Transit Association, uh, the Iowa DOT has requested uh information for Iowa bicycle map. So everybody get ready for that.
Very happy.
That'll. Then they're gonna do the regional transit association is also gonna do a public meeting for their fiscal years twenty six through twenty nine transportation improvement plans. Dorothy Sire, Workforce Development Board is having a special meeting this week to discuss the merger details uh outside of our region. And then uh we talked about before how we're not going to uh pursue merging inside our region. Make our region any wider. Uh, an organization called Viewpoint uh contacted me about a possible TV episode, so I'll talk with them and uh.
Think they contacted all of us, Pete.
Okay, good. And then uh substantive substance abuse prevention coalition of Beacon County met last week. Uh, two big, uh, excuse me, one big item is that they're starting to tube good for drugs education in schools. So that's amazing and awesome. So that's all I have.
Um, I did get a uh email notification paradigm uh which conducts the pipeline safety training every year. And I assuming you guys got a notice also.
Yeah.
And that's a really good uh presentations that they do. And you do get certified. It gives you two hours of uh continuing yet credit also. Uh, Dawn and I have gone the last two years, so it'd be good opportunity for you, maybe.
Yeah, I think I said that for it. Do you remember the date of?
October twenty.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Yeah, till the twenty. It is down in animal. So this year.
I would like to remind everybody this has boards and commissions. It doesn't say what we're receiving on our emails.
Say what now?
Said I would like to remind everybody this for boards and commissions, not exactly what we're seeing on our emails.
I just thought it'd be.
That is.
That's essential.
Yeah, I agree.
Anything else on board commissions?
Well, that's just perfect timing because I got nine ten.
All right.
Okay, um, we're gonna see the open the beds for the farmland. The first one is for the two hundred and forty two acres. I received one bed. Another bid was from Henderson Farms and the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars per acre.
Two hundred and how much?
Fifty.
What are we getting now? We have to like over the hundred on that one.
I have to look up the. Instant.
Three eighty five. You were at three eighty five? Per acre?
Yep.
Well, we're putting it out to bed and lost. Oh.
There's a thirty five dollar.
Was that the only bid?
No one did?
Yep.
So it was nine thousand three hundred three ninety three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars in before, and now we're down to sixty thousand five hundred. Did I do my math correctly, Owen?
You're close. I entertain a motion to approve the uh bid from Henderson Farms for hundred fifty dollars per acre.
Let me see what was you?
In favor?
I'll take. We need a second.
Oh. Right.
What happens if you don't approve this? Do we go back to our old lease? There's no way to do that, is there?
Not not with the um contract. Is this different than what we don't have that language in the this contract compared to what we have in the past year.
Can I ask a question before you vote? And tell me, um, who was the prior ended on the property that was leased?
Henderson.
Yeah.
The same same person. And what's the total acreage that we're talking about?
Two hundred and forty two acres.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Give me a second.
All in favor?
Right.
Thank you for that. You're negotiating.
Well, there wasn't a lot when I had way too much for it and uh I made those. Maybe I'm always a lot of this conversation. So I appreciate you talking to me.
You bet. Thanks. Yeah.
Okay, uh, the next one is for the fifteen acres and yes, John, so are you? That one was ours. Um. We received one bid from John Boggy, and that is in the amount of two hundred and seventy five dollars per acre.
Two seventy five per acre?
Correct. That's for the fifteen acres and that is the only bit.
What were we getting before?
For twenty five.
I'd entertain a motion to approve uh the bid from Boggy Farms for fifteen acres at two hundred and seventy five dollars per.
Make the motion.
Oh, I did. Yeah. All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
When I get leases all updated, guys, I'll give you a jingle and then you can come in and get them signed. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. We have an item for discussions on battery energy storage systems.
I think that I need to call some other guys.
I'll do this. Acronym for that is D E S S or B E S.
Battery energies. Swords. Yeah.
Preface this. It's been a point of a lot of email conversation and uh behind the scenes work and uh, I guess I'm going to direct this to Mr. Wieland. First of all, I use my time now as chairman of the board supervisors to preface this discussion. You have come onto this board with a mission to undermine my teamwork or working relationship with your fellow board members. You sent an email to our county attorney stating you have a special file of supposed violations that the other two board members have made. This email was from January. Also in January, I sent an email to you, Keith. I am very curious as to what your agenda is. As supervisors, we are not being micromanagers of our elected officials and department heads. I am hearing rumblings that you are overstepping out of your lane, not a good start in your first week. In addition, your subversing to accusations for open meeting violations is very trouble. Even the county attorney is concerned with your actions. And what is your endgame? As a board, we have a huge responsibility to our citizens. We need to work together as a team for the county. Your actions in the first week raise serious questions. Your success is our success, and we need to eliminate barriers. I would walk in the conversation to clarify your attempt. Please reach out. I had no response from this. Now, this uh January third. From July twenty five, I sent this to him. I am appalled that we have all the controversy brewing in our county. I insert myself in the county government to give back to my community and serve the citizens of Buchanan County. I've had a great career that had many accomplishments and awards. Part of my retirement of as manager, board's manager of the year three times and a company of over four thousand employees. I'm humbled to receive that honor. Many of my employees would gladly work for me again if we formed a fabulous team of people. I served several years as a member of the city of independent city council and also as mayor pro temp. I never had any issue. I have tried to continue that goal in county government, but we have encountered many obstacles from Mr. Wieland. There is no teamwork or any type of collaboration or teamwork within the board due to his actions. To be condemned by one person or anyone is a slap in the face. Present the facts and defend that. I am proud of my record and service to our county sincerely. Uh, for May of twenty twenty five. I sent this to the county attorney. Good morning, Sean. I hate to bother you, but I have some concerns that I appreciate your opinion. Keith Wieland is putting out demands on department heads, and I feel required board approval for any action. He is a member of a three member board. Individual board members should not be demanding information from other elected officials or department heads without board direction to do so. His reluctance to interface with other board members is causing a problem in the performance of our board. His demands put undue pressure on our county team that leaves them in a bad situation. I would like you to review the last few board videos where he is up blind, in my opinion. He will not communicate with Don or I about issues, choose to make demands like the officials and department heads about board. He would, I would welcome your comments. I thought that if we have an issue that needs input from another department, we take a board action. The recent letter to the editor about EMS initiative is a prime example. He voted in favor of the letter I submitted, then sent a letter to the paper in opposition as a Buchanan county supervisor. Chris Wogan Bush can give even more examples of overstepping his role. He does not respond to my texts, emails, phone calls, so I'm beyond frustrated. This is an uncomfortable request, but Dawn, Chris, and I are really frustrated. We need to work together as a board. Thanks. From January, again, Mr. Wieland, Wieland sent an email to the county attorney, Sean Harden. Uh, January third, just after taking office, stating that he was setting up a special outlook file for all emails from John Curds and Don Global that may qualify as open beating violations. He also stated his intent to forward those emails to I D investigation. He clearly had no intention to work together with the staff of board members for the good of the county. The board supervisors from three and a whole vote approved a resolution that board members was not offered individual direction due to department heads or other elected officials. The direction must come from full board action. This has been ignored by Mr. Wieland for his own interest. And now we signed that resolution by twenty. From August of twenty twenty five, Mr. Wieland has entered into private negotiations with a battery storage enterprise for possible location in Buchanan County. He is attempted to circumvent the process by requesting a meeting with the planning and zoning department head and a few select members of the planning and zoning commission. This is a clear violation of the open meeting statute. He, who is supposed champion of holding our county accountable to the regulations of chapters twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, has demonstrated he is all about his personal desires and not what's best for Buchanan County. The board supervisors have reluctantly agreed to place this on our agenda today for initial discussion. Further, you claim to be all about financial responsibility and governance. Your petty malicious second allegations sent to the I D board have resulted in near five thousand and nearly five thousand dollars in legal fees and in unintended outside legal fees. You are a county taxpayer with a sincere apology for your actions. Didn't have a response or no response.
I guess I would like to ask the best people what negotiations occurred uh during the meeting that they requested.
Bring a third party to our into our argument.
Well, this is the allegation. This is the response to the allegation.
There's a lot more allegations there than just that.
As the only one that cared to address.
So you don't want to work with the rest of your board? You gotta, you gotta understand, you either survive as a team or we sink as a team. Do you want to sink like a stone or do you want to fly like a bird? That's a question you need to ask yourself. I don't want to answer.
These folks asked to meet with us last week.
No, Keith, you had respond. You had behind the scenes stuff. I got emails. You should have brought that to our attention. Just hey, F Y I, guys. No, you didn't. I had to dig and get it. Call communication.
I would add that farm lease negotiations we just had today requesting bids was driven by your insistence of.
Thank you again for this morning.
And again, it's going to cost Buchanan County extra. Just. That was that your insistence that we go to that. Now.
That's a good. Right.
If we had agreed to do it. And guess we get when we vote. At that point, I would uh now like to uh go into the battery energy storage system discussion.
Um, I would like to preface some of this discussion as I did look online and do some research. So apparently, and correct me if I'm wrong, Evan, what happens with the battery um energy storage units is in this instance, they would pull energy, extra energy from our grid and store it. And then when there wasn't extra energy that was being produced by um, our coal plants or any the other inputs that are plugged into the system, then that storage unit push it, push that energy back out into the system so that there would be uh less rolling brownouts and and it would also help in times like emergencies. Am I right? Do I have the overview of this rate?
Yeah, um, can you hear me okay?
Okay.
Would you mind introducing yourself?
Yeah, I could do that. Um, my name's Evan Coloney. I'm a licensed engineer with New Leaf Energy. I'm on the civil team. Um, there's some other folks on our team that we have here. Um, Max Christian is on our development team with Kabir Singh. Um, Will and Nikki Letterbetter is our um local council we have out of Des Moines. Um, yeah, so so Dawn, just to quickly address your question, yeah, the the and then I want to go back and and um um, start over a bit too. So yeah, so the way the batteries work is in periods of low demand, those plants are still generating the same amount of power. So the batteries store them. And then when there's periods of high demand in the summer or or whenever, those batteries release it back to the grid. So like you said, Dawn, it it um, you know, adds to grid reliability. Um, and I do want to just go back and give a little bit of uh history. Um, we started reaching out to the um the planning and zoning department. I had a conversation with them, Amber and Cody, maybe back in April, just kind of broaching the subject of uh battery storage. And we noticed that it wasn't in the code. So we tried to have those conversations with them first and understanding what the next steps could be. Um, from that point, we discussed with our local council, uh Nikki out of Des Moines about, hey, you know, um the county doesn't have any code. Um, you know, how do we approach this from a reporting standpoint? So that's when we got our local council involved. Um, we were not aware, you know, our intent is to work with the county, not against them. Um, you know, we're not aware of anything else that was going on prior to these discussions. Um, you know, we're just more so just trying to reach out and have a open dialogue, right? And um, you know, there was nothing, no behind the scenes things going on. So um, that's all we're trying to do is just work with you all and and not, you know, circumvent anyone. And that's why we're here is to introduce ourselves and um start on the right foot. So so apologies if there was any miscommunication on our end. It was you know, we are, you know, we started reaching out to the planning board back in April, and we're just trying to, you know, understand what the next steps could be. So apologies for that. And then, uh, so Dawn, did I answer your question from before?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because um that it didn't need to be hooked up to the solar system of sorts that it actually hooks into our grid that we already have currently and takes all of our energy inputs and stores them because they continue to make the same amount of energy. This way the energy is not lost. It is stored for future use.
That's correct. Yeah. So we're not hooking into a nearby solar farm or or wind energy. We're not doing any of that. We're just um, and the site that we located, we sent um a little informational package that kind of introduces ourselves in the project. The site that we located is uh right on the corner of Jackson Ave and one forty uh of one forty eighth Avenue. There's existing substation right there. The parcel next to that is what we're looking at. So so you're absolutely right. It's just going to connect right into that existing substation. Um, you, we call it a gentai. So if you hear I say it, that's what we mean. It's just the the line that goes from the batteries just ties right into the existing substation.
Do you know per tax code how that pays? Is it, is it based up on the structure like a property tax or is it based on energy units stored and produced? Do you want? Do you have that information?
Yeah, um, Max, if if you can chime in on that, Max Christian, he's our our lead developer on the project. And and Max, is that something that that you know? I think Max is calling in. He had some audio issues.
I don't see anybody in here on a phone call. Um, do I have him try to call back?
Um, yeah, there is one on the phone call. He's currently muted. There it is.
Yes.
Are we on mute anymore, right?
No.
Okay. I think he's, yeah, he's having audio issues. So um, yeah, we can, we can follow up on that. I know and well, unless Will, you have um, well, do you know?
Oh. Sorry, I pressed my my camera button. So my mute button. Um, but yes, uh, my name is Will Paraguay. I'm a colleague of Evan. Sorry, I pressed my, my camera button. So my mute button. Um, but yes, uh, my name is Will Paraguay. I'm a colleague of Evan's. I'm a civil engineer as well, but I could speak on the tax a little bit. I know it does, you know, varies from state to state what you can do, but we. Um, most of the time we negotiate like pilot agreements um, with the county or the jurisdiction. And it can be, you know, based on the assessed value of the units. Um, and we can, you know, negotiate a pilot to have a steady stream of revenue. We can also, you know, also learn to um, negotiate and, and discuss other community benefit agreements that we can have to. Have a, you know, steady source of revenue from the county for our project throughout the lifetime of the project. Um, I'd have to talk with Max and our attorney about more, what we can do more state specific. In terms of any sales taxes, anything that we can kind of keep those taxes vocal, but I, I'm not prepared to speak a hundred percent on that at the second. You know, typically I, I've seen some places you do a, a fee per megawatt. Um, you know, per power generated, you can do it based off of the, the value of the assessed battery storage units. It's kind of done a couple of different ways across the country. So we can certainly discuss um, the specifics with the county.
This is John Kirk. I've got a question. How many acres was this that you were looking at?
Yeah, the, um, right now it, it depends. Um, you know. As we get into the nitty gritty design, it, you know, the, the area that we need, we could expand, uh, you know, or can, or, or reduce a bit. It depends on the technology. I think a good rule of thumb that we're going with is about fifteen acres plus or minus. Could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less, but that's kind of the rule of thumb that we, we go with at this point, including, you know, our fenced area. Um, the batteries include, you know, you have your battery units, but you also have an onsite. Uh, collector substation that collects that before it ties into the, the existing substation next door. So plus or minus, I'd say about fifteen acres is a good rule of thumb.
Bring materials that you submitted. It looks like it said plus or minus eighty.
That's the, that's the, that's the whole parcel.
That's the entire parcel.
Right.
Yeah. I think in the supplemental. Uh, there is a page that I included that had a couple of yellow boxes, I believe.
It, it, it looks like that parcel is, I want to say, like, it's, it's not your, our highest CSR ground. But it's not down to the fifty five. Looks like it's about sixty if CSR.
Yeah, that's why we included, um, let's see, it's the sixth slide, maybe. I, I, I know that in conversations with planning and zoning and looking at your code. I know that the CSR, it's very important, right? You know, the, the corn suitability rating. So we wanted to include that. You know, uh, be transparent is, hey, this is over fifty five CSR. Um, and yeah, I think around seventy is a good number. Um, you know, like. Yeah, around seventies or seventy four. Um, you know, we felt that it was consider, we're, we're trying to find land where it's. You know, we're a little bit constrained here because we have to be close to the substation. So we don't have too many options. Um, you know, that we know that the substation was also built on a CSR of over sixty five. So we felt like we were being. Kind of consistent with, with how it was being used nearby. Um. So what, what we do is because we know that the topsoil is important and we deal with this in all states that we develop. Um, typically what we do is, and this is standard, we, you know, we strip the top. Now the top, let's just assume the topsoil, that good soil is like a foot deep, right? You know, typically we strip that and we store it onsite. Um. And you know, at the end of construction, we, we, we spread it out, right? We keep that good soil onsite. And then eventually when these projects get decommissioned at the end of their life. That soil is still there, right? So we still try to keep that, the good topsoil onsite and, you know, instead of taking it away.
Right, um, another question is, what is life of something like this?
Uh, it, it could be, uh, Will might have a better answer. Twenty five years. Go ahead.
Yeah, twenty five, twenty, between twenty and thirty years is a typical lifespan.
Now, do these get recommissioned at that point in time? Like, like, do we take the batteries out and do something with them and then add new batteries or?
That's a good, good question. I mean, so be throughout the lifespan of those twenty to thirty years, there is what's called augmentation where they cycle some batteries. So, you know, like your phone, these batteries will, will lose capacity over time. And so to keep at our megawatts. Um, or our, our desired power capacity will cycle through some batteries over time, replace some old ones or poorly functioning ones with new ones. Um, and that, all of that will be like within our plans and within that fifteen acre footprint, we'll be adding to our project and making it larger. Um, and then after the twenty to thirty years, um, you know, the projects, it's hard to say what will happen in twenty, thirty years. We'll have a decommissioning plan. Um, and plans to recycle all of the batteries and to fully restore the site conditions back to, to original. Um, you know, if a landowner, if the landowner uh, and our team. Wants to uh, extend that period beyond that twenty to thirty years, we'd have to re-permit the project. You know, agree to terms of the landowner and that project could continue operating with new batteries or, you know, so I think there's some optionality there, but. Um, we have a decommissioning plan in place. And then if we want to go beyond those twenty to thirty years. Um, we would need to have, you know, a new permit and uh, new release and site control with the landowner, et cetera.
And then none of this, and I have to ask this because it does have to do with energy and I'm kind of curious. Um, so I know. In some instances, eminent domain can be used if it's like for the good of something. Is this one of those instances or this is just a private in, private company and you have to get permission from the landowner?
Correct. We're a private company. We have um, a LOI and a lease signed with the landowner. And when we commence construction, we'll have that lease narrowed down to just, you know, our project area. They'll still have site control of the remaining. Um, I don't know the specific lease structure of this, but typically it's like a twenty year lease with some additional options up to thirty years. Um. And yes, yeah, so private lease, private landowner, no eminent domain or, or anything like that.
So that would be between you and the landowner, right?
Correct.
And uh, just as another data point, um, uh, a lion, a utility company, they're, they're doing a similar battery storage in Lansing, Iowa. Um, to be about the fifth best project in Iowa. So I know that there's in, in Iowa, there's some demand for data centers. So that's why you, you might notice the, um. You know, there's more visibility in Iowa because of these data centers. So that's why some of these are popping up more to throw that in there.
Do you happen to know the other five where the other five are located? Like what counties?
I can, yeah, we can follow up with that. Sorry, go ahead.
That would be helpful for our planning and zoning commission to take a look at this when we go to look at ordinances and setbacks and what we need for setbacks.
Right, understood. I'll follow up with that.
Thank you. Not right now, but I'm sure I will.
What? For the environmental concerns and uh, what, what have you done to mitigate those environmental concerns?
Yeah, the typical environmental concerns, they're, they're um, just like your standard development. So there's, you know, there's wetlands. We've already talked about the corn suitability. Rating threatened endangered species. Um, so we go into the motions of checking all those boxes. We're going to do a wetland study and, and, you know. Pivot based on the results of that. Uh, same thing with endangered species, right? We're, we're gonna. You know, uh, we're gonna, moving forward, we're going to send boots on the ground to do this, all this environmental due diligence. Um, I would say for battery storage, um, yeah, you know, you know, uh. Wetlands you avoid, um, about some more environmental concerns are if there is a fire, right? You know, how do you put the, put those out and, and what that looks like? Um, and noise. So I see those are the biggest environmental concerns that we see with batteries. Um, you know, we can go more into like the, the fire component of it. Um, typically we. Um, again, you know, we're, 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 we want to work with the county, right? So we do extensive training. We set up all these. Emergency response plans with the local fire department. Um, to kind of explain and walk through, hey, you know, if there is something like this is how we do it. Um, but for your typical environmental concerns, we just, it's almost like a normal development, right? We just try to avoid the things that we can uh, mitigate where we can. Um. And, and you know, build around them as, as much as practical.
If you don't mind touching more on the fire mitigation for lithium batteries?
Yeah, yeah, uh, sure, we can do that.
Want me to speak on that, Evan?
Sure.
Sure. So, yes, um, you can see, or if you Google battery and storage, I'm sure you'll, you'll see some fire concerns pop up in some previous. Um, fires that have happened with these battery storage systems. Um, the one prominent one being in, in Moss Landing, California. We can, you know, I can go into the nitty gritty and show you how our, our technology is different than uh, Moss Landing and the codes have evolved. And what we're, what we're proposing is doing um, these outdoor containers. Um, so you're kind of separating the battery storage units in these different purpose-built containers. Um, so basically if, if there is an issue in one container, it doesn't spread throughout the whole system. It's contained to this, this one container. Um, in a smaller fire. If you see Moss Landing, it was a big indoor battery with older technology. Um, we also use LFP batteries, which is more um, stable than N M C batteries. So they're both lithium ion batteries. N M C being nickel magnesium cobalt, LFP being lithium phosphate. Uh, lithium iron phosphate and the LFP batteries have a, have a higher tolerance for thermal runaway, a more stable technology. And so we're using the, the latest and greatest. We're to meet all of the um, the codes. There's a NFPA eight five five. Is the National Fire Protection Agency's um, kind of chapter on battery energy storage. Uh, they have a new twenty twenty six code that's coming out later this month or October. Um, we've gotten a sneak peek. We'll be adhering to all of those standards. Um, you know, we, when we come into a, a new place like this, typically the fire codes might not have caught up to. Um, the latest battery storage uh, code. So we propose, hey, we'll, we'll meet those and we'll have robust discussions with the fire department. Um, you know, over, over what they're want to see as well. Um, as I said, we, uh, two typical things we do with these projects is develop an emergency response plan. That's. Um, you know, uh, their response plan is directly communicated with the fire department. So we'd work, you know, send over draft copies to them, get their markups. And that copy is kind of a live copy throughout the lifetime system and gets updated. Um, throughout the life of the project as best practices, um, you know. The, the latest and greatest best practices come to light. Um, we also typically do a hazardous mitigation uh, analysis. Um, and share that with the fire department. And that's taking a look at like, all right, worst case, if a battery storage container does um. Catch fire, you know, all right, where, where the, what's the extent of any hazardous substances or, or plumes? And making sure that our setbacks and locations are appropriate and to help inform them um, in their response. So. Those are the typical things, you know, we, we like to uh, talk and engage with the fire department early and we can. Um, you know, typically a lot of times we'll bring in a third party fire consultant or experts to uh, talk with. Um, the fire departments educate them on battery storage and answer any questions they have and, and then, you know, do additional training once, once this is actually built. Um, and before it's turned on to, to go through and, and do a site walk with them and do an onsite training there as well.
NFP twenty six, uh, National Fire Protection uh, uh, rules for twenty six. Sounds like that's something we probably want to review. Figure out if we want to adopt that.
I would think that we could have emergency management review that because they're, they're very. And they will probably need to be included into the conversation. Is there any funding or grants available for our local fire departments through our emergency management personnel?
I'm not aware of any local grants. I will say it's, it's common for us to provide some um, funding for the fire department and some community benefits for the fire department directly.
Good, that would be good.
Certainly look into local grants and stuff with their attorney as well.
Okay. I mean, I'm not sure if grants might. I would say funding was what is actually after not grants.
Yep, understand.
And I, I just want to give a little bit of history on, on New Leaf. Um. You know, New Leaf, we've been around, uh, we were part of Borrego, um, and Borrego's been a, a big time developer in the market. Um, uh. You know, for, for almost twenty years and back in twenty twenty two, New Leaf was a development arm for Borrego. So, so we've been doing this for, for a long time and. Um, batteries specifically, we do a lot in New York City and I'm sure you all can imagine New York City is um. It's a unique beast to, to develop in, um, and fire is a really big concern, right? In, in, in you, as it is everywhere. So. Um, you know, we take what we learn from there and, and, and some of these codes that are written. Um, are based on what we're learning in other places. So, you know, we're taking these stringent fire codes that we're following other places. And you know, we're, we're not, we're not, we're keeping it consistent, right? So what we learn in these tough markets is we're applying it. To these projects in Iowa. So that's what you just want to give a background is, you know, we're. We're trying to be consistent and, and meet all the fire code that we can and, and, you know, and not cut any corners on that.
On the topic of markets, uh, when I worked for the utilities board, what's now the Iowa Utilities Commission. Uh, one of the topics they talked about was uh, there wasn't a lot of profitability unless you found in, into that niche market. You kind of touched on the data centers and that evolution is coming. Uh, would you mind expanding on that, that topic?
I can. I want to, can I go back just a second while we're on, what the run?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. So which, do you know which fire departments would be involved in thinking probably Hazelton, Independence and maybe just some? From the location?
We can look into that and double check. Um. Yeah, we can follow up with you on that. What would be available?
I, I would say it's not uncommon in rural areas, probably like this, is that we have a local fire department. That we work with, but also have the, the, maybe some larger fire departments like Independence in this case that are nearby that would lend support. If there is an event that we work with all of them and, and give training to all of them and maybe, but, but, you know. Um, might work closest with the, the actual. Area where we'll, we'll double check what jurisdiction we're in. I would imagine Hazelton being right there is, is, is pretty close. It might be first on scene. So.
Yeah, they would be.
Yeah, Chris, Chris Harris chimed in. He's our emergency, known as our emergency management coordinators. Um, and mentioned Hazelton, obviously Stanley is another folks one, uh, Independence and then uh. One, one of course, that's uh, the ones in the west.
Fairbanks.
Fairbanks, thanks for that. So yeah, the, the market aspect of it, what's, what's your plan with it? Uh, how, how do you see this working? It's not something we necessarily want to clean up after the fact if, if your business model doesn't work. What's uh, can you touch on those topics?
Yeah, I could, I can touch on them a little bit. Um. So, so Max, our project developer is probably the best to answer this. Unfortunately, he's. Uh, chatting us now is, is, he's talking and you, apparently we can't hear him. So um, I see, gives me some messages to, to clear that up. I will say. Um, you know, one thing we do develop is what's called a decommissioning estimate and we're before, and typically what we do is provide a decommissioning bond or some financial surety. So. If there is, you know, obviously you don't plan on this and it hasn't happened to us, but if there's any bankruptcy or anything down the line of the owner of the system. Goes defunct, there's um, you know, a financial surety with the county that it can be decommissioned. Um, you know, with no cost to the county. Um, that being said, for the market, this is a, we're, we're in MISO territory here. Um, Max is saying that uh, most likely scenario will be the utility will own the battery. So. We're going through the MISO process. We're in the MISO queue and the interconnection queue and, and in MISO and then. Um, you know, we're going through kind of that phase concurrently with permitting. Um, and once we, we clear that interconnection and have a, and have a permit. Um, this likely, this battery will likely be sold and owned by utility. Um, it's needed by the utilities to meet the peak capacity demand, which is driven by retail electricity users. Um, electricity from the battery storage is bought and sold in the MISO wholesale market. Um. So that's. I, you know, I'm sure we can expand and give you a better answer um, down the line. Apologies as. Um, I'm a civil engineer, so it's my, not my expertise on the, on the market side of things here.
But this is John. I've just got a quick question. You said. You are the developers and then the, the eventual end game for you is to sell it to uh, in, energy producer?
Uh, we would likely sell it to the utility. Um, so what we do is we'll, we'll get a permit. Um, we'll get interconnection through MISO when we have the site control. And we'll likely sell the project to a utility who ultimately own and operate the project. Um, you know, all of the, what permit conditions, et cetera, will still apply. It'll be under the same kind of project LLC that will be uh, under the project. So, you know, everything that we permit and do will, will still be. Requirements and conditions um, throughout the operating life of the project. But yes, as a developer, we, we do not actually operate these projects. We, we bring them to um, kind of shovel ready.
So it had to be either Alliance or InterAmerican?
Correct. Alliance Interstate Power and Light, East-West Iowa Co-op, Basin Electricity Co-op would be the pool of likely buyers.
We've got several members of our Planning and Zoning Commission here and our our planning zoning department head. I'd like to ask if they have any questions that they would like to raise at this point.
Wait and see if they go first. Um, what about spills or leaks into the ground? What's that going to look like?
Yeah, it's a good question. So we do provide spill containment as required for our transformers and inverters. In the event of of a fire, you know, the recommended fire approach is to not should say not fight the fire directly. It could be be a defensive firefighting approach where you're spraying down nearby containers to to keep things cool, but the actual active container that might be on fire would be would be defensive and to and to kind of let it burn. Therefore, you know, there shouldn't be runoff there, but everything would be directed to stormwater basins and we'd have a a reclamation plan in place. You know, and it would be also spelled out in the emergency response plan if there is a fire to have to have a a reclamation plan and and a cleanup plan there. You know, these containers are typically sealed and have an impermeable barrier underneath the containers and and as I said, that the typical spill containment for you know, any like oil spills during operation that shouldn't happen, but we would have spill containment there in detail within our plans.
Just a question on that. You said let let it burn out on its own. Are there dangerous fumes or toxins that are released in a fire such as that?
Yes, I mean, it's like like any fire, the smoke is not, you know, it's the smoke is toxic, right? You you're going to have lithium iron phosphate. You know, you compare it to a house fire, you're going to have you know, cables and plastics and house fire. So like like a typical fire, you would have smoke coming out that in the events that that smoke is blowing, you'd want to be careful about that smoke. Our hazardous mitigation analysis that I mentioned earlier, the HMA that would be delivered with the fire department would take a look at that. You know, in the event of a fire, any what what are the it would help give the fire department their kind of setbacks when fighting the fire and to know what to expect for, you know, kind of a setback distance needed for any toxic. One of the big ones is HF hydrogen fluoride. Hydrogen fluoride typically goes up the atmosphere and disperses into safe levels. So you know, as part of the emergency response plan, there would be air monitoring done around to make sure that you know, air monitoring where nearby receptors, where the fire department is staging, et cetera, is is all still below EPA levels and state levels of of guidance for any toxic chemicals or substances or whatever in the air. Yeah, so air air monitoring is is a big thing that's developed in the emergency response plan.
They would typically stage downwind of that anyway.
Correct, yes. Yep, exactly. So typically, we like to try to give two access points for these things. So you know, maybe have one primary access and then have a secondary access in the event of an emergency. And so that gives them options depending on which direction, et cetera.
And I do see on your your informational packet here that the when you're building these, it is double double walled sealed steel container.
Yeah, so they're purpose, correct, they're purpose-built, purpose-built containers. They kind of look like shipping containers. They do have two-hour fire-rated walls. They have built-in air conditioning units to cool down the units each. So if you think of the, you know, you're going to have about a twenty-foot-long, ten-foot-high, eight-foot-wide shipping container. And that's going to be one battery container. And then within each battery container, there are modules of batteries. So even within the container, they're separated by these steel barriers to try to give even more even separate the batteries even more. Within each battery compartments, there is monitoring, remote monitoring. So it remote it monitors the temperature, the voltage. You know, smoke monitors are in there, et cetera. And then there's provisions where if any of that temperature goes out of spec, voltage go out of spec and you smoke detected, there's a remote shut off and you know, the whole system is is immediately shut off. So there's remote monitoring that way and we can we can hardwire and okay. Smoke's detected in our remote monitoring, it gets directed right to the fire department and they're notified immediately once smokes detected or a certain temperature is reached, we can work with the fire department on that and emergency response plan of exact response and notifications that go to the fire department. But correct, they're they're in built, they're in purpose-built metal metal containers with you know, fired mitigation systems and and monitoring in place.
Is there also any heat monitoring before you have a fire? Obviously, it's going to be overheating.
Yep, each cell is monitored for temperature and if the temperature goes out of that range, it would be shut off.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Our chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission is back here, so.
I wish we could see this this presentation. It would be so helpful for you.
Yes.
We can share it. We'll we'll share it to Amber and Cody after this as well.
Oh, well, that's all right. I've shared it via to Amber and Cody. I think she shared it on.
Okay, gotcha.
The question I have is on your other five projects. Have you worked with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources?
So those other five projects, that's not ours. That's just other developers who are are working in in Iowa. And but you know, your question was, are we working with the Department of Natural Resources? And yeah, we would. Where I I would, you know, I've been doing civil development for ten years now and I would just consider, you know, how you would approach any project, right? If we're building a subdivision or whatever it is. All those checks that we go through through DNR, you know, for an endangered species, that's all stuff that we we would do, right? We'd have to do and we'd have to work around it. So yes, we would coordinate with them.
Yeah, yeah, to build off Evan, we're we're very early in the development stages here. So we would do a wetland delineation and habitat assessment. We've done some desktop versions of those, get some people on site, some biologists to do that and then, you know, make the appropriate coordinations with the agencies, whether it's U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Iowa Department of Natural Resources, Army Corps of Engineers, et cetera.
We did, for what it's worth, through the the DNR, you can do a desktop submittal of your project site for threatened endangered species. And we did that and they came back with a no-impact letter. You know, that's something that you take a few minutes, you submit online. So that's something we've we've already done on the early parts of this process.
You mentioned your SCADA and your remote shut off. I assume you have a manual shut off closely and then personnel that would be available?
Yeah, there's there is manual shut off. There's also remote shut off. Typically, what these things are remotely monitored, but you have a representative within a certain radius that would be available on obviously be available via telephone right away and you'd have to be on site in the event of of an, you know, an emergency event within a within a few, you know, I don't know exactly where they'd be located, but at least within a few hour radius. We can, you know, work on that with the fire department on the exact radius that's needed. But they would be the main point of contact with the fire department. And yeah, we'd have a remote remote stopping and disconnect and also manually.
Then I inadvertently introduced the term called SCADA. If you don't mind describing that.
SCADA, yeah, let me, I might have to defer us to our battery storage expert, but it's kind of like a software that that allows for the remote monitoring. So it's basically the computer software that's program that is the used for the remote monitoring.
Yeah, supervisory, control and data acquisition.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience out here? Honey?
Yeah, they mentioned that they would be turning this over to probably the utility companies. That automatically puts that into eminent domain control once the utility company takes over. So they wanted to expand that. That's what they'd be looking at. I also, let's go back to the fire department. We have in Buchanan County, the majority of our fire departments are volunteer. They simply do not have the equipment to fight a fire like this. We went through this with wind turbines and solar panels and they simply are not equipped to do it. That will cost us a small fortune to equip the firefighters to take care to handle something like this because it's dangerous. The you're already one going to get toxic fumes. You're going to have when they start putting water on the other batteries that aren't, because my understanding, you cannot fight this fire with water. But when they start putting water around it, things are going to start flooding and it's going to start leaking into the soil and that will be ruined and contaminated forever. These are forever chemicals. They're not going to just disappear down the road.
South of Small Creek, right to the south?
Yes. And so
there's a small lake that runs to the south right through there. So there's potential for floodplain. These are fully contained, Bonnie, they're on the ground. So it's not like firing fighting a fire in the in turbine because they would be, they're on the ground and they are fully contained.
You still can't can't pour water on those batteries.
Right, but they're fully contained. So the fire would not be able would not go outside of that because they would, they're contained within a double-walled steel and steel container.
Eventually, that's going to have to give, isn't it? How can the fire stay in there?
It'll suffocate out. You have to have air for a fire. It's an older system.
Will William, Evan, could you didn't hear most of that?
Yeah, yeah, the intimate domain, right? So we again, we have, we have a lease with the landowner. Right? So that's, you know, we're working with them and we're also, you know, ideally, we're getting this permitted through the county, right? So we're not going in a domain route. You know, so if it if it if this ever was, if it ever had to get expanded, right? You know, that's something that the utility, you know, the only reason that I think we're proposing two hundred megawatts, right? So we had to submit an application package to the utility and the utility says, oh, you could, you know, if you tie in two hundred megawatts, you have to do X, Y, Z system upgrades to our system. So the point is we're, you know, maxing out the footprint that we are allowed to with the utility. But you know, if there was expansion, we would still treat it the same way we are now. It's just through the county and get that permitted. So hopefully I I addressed that intimate domain question. Go ahead.
And I can add for the well, for the for the fire portion of that. It's certainly understood that the volunteer fire departments around here are likely very small where where we are, might not be totally equipped. We do offer, you know, as we mentioned before, we can offer up to, you know, in the six figures for funds to help buy equipments, necessary equipment anymore, you know, yeah, necessary equipment for the fire departments and provide training to them. I would say that we'd also can provide tests that have been done. They're called large-scale fire tests where they potentially set one container on fire and show that it can't propagate to the next one. And so these these containers do have what's called are basically off-gassing, so it doesn't if if there isn't a fire, it kind of off gases these gases as they build up, so it doesn't build into an explosion. And let's see, there's another point I wanted to make here.
The groundwater, which which yes, the the site is, there is a floodplain nearby and a stream nearby, which, you know, we would avoid. Right? So so, yeah, the the there are containerized, right? The, you know, so if there's a battery cell in a container, right? So those batteries are in the containers. So if there's a fire, they're, you know, isolate to that. And if it, you know, if it expands and there is, you know, the water is used on could be used on the adjacent battery cells, right, to help cool them down. But let's just say worst-case scenario, there is water that you know, is introduced to the fire. What we could do is, and what we do do is like we said before, there's like impermeable liners, right? So let's say you have a concrete pad for your battery unit, you know, your storage container. It's just on the concrete and around that is gravel, right? So we know the gravel is has voids and the water can flow through the gravel, but and the bottom of that, think of it like a landfill, right? The way landfills are designed is you have this these liners that stops the groundwater from the landfill mixing with the land, the water outside the landfill. So it's something similar to that where we have an impermeable layer that that can help catch that water. So it doesn't have a, you know, a event where it's flowing into groundwater or anything like that.
What what would a fire look like if for folks who don't know how to recognize a lithium fire?
Yeah, I know the there's what these new developers or battery manufacturers are doing is they're they're actually setting their batteries on fire on purpose to to show what happens. So maybe we can now, well, that's a certification that they have to get now. Is that right?
Yeah, it's becoming a new requirement called the large-scale fire test and we can provide, you know, for the battery manufacturer that we select, we can provide that to the fire department. I would say that for a small event, you wouldn't see, you know, to the naked eye, you wouldn't know anything was going on. And it gets contained and there wouldn't be any smoke in a, it'd be a medium event. You'd have some smoke coming out of the container. And then like in a worst-case scenario, if the if the whole container goes up, there would likely be eventually be some flames coming up and and smoke from that container. It's the best way I can describe it.
Um, yeah, Brad Plankton, City of Independence. I just wanted to try and understand this. So we have a developer that that if a developer, so you've got a lease agreement with the property owner and then you finish the development, at the point that you finish the development, then you sell it to the utility. Is the lease then assigned to the?
Correct. That's that's correct. Yes. So so the way it's structured is we have a project LLC that's owned by New Leaf Energy. That project LLC, the lease is under, if we apply to a permit eventually to the county, that permit would be under that LLC. And then when we transfer it to the utility, that whole LLC is transferred from New Leaf Energy to the utility. So the the project LLC is still, you know, the one carrying the permit, the lease, and then it gets assigned to to that new owner.
And then with the monitoring itself, would that then be done by the utility company pursuant to the?
Correct, yes. Utility company would would be, you know, utility company, wherever the owner is, would be responsible for the monitoring. I'm sure they have, you know, there are O and M monitoring companies that they could sub that out to. It'd still be their responsibility. We specialize in that. You know, there might be an opportunity there where a couple of other of the batteries in Iowa are kind of all monitored at the same place. I'm not sure exactly how that would work, but but yes, the the monitoring would would be the responsibility of of the operator of the system.
So then, once you's, once you complete the the development itself, you kind of step away and you're leaving their hands of the others that are behind you, the chain.
That's correct. That's correct.
It looks like the the example you sent me with Allen Lake County, it looks like Alliance Energy is the one that would that manages that and would manage the that would do the monitoring.
Correct, yes. And again, they might have you know, a subcontractor who specializes in that monitoring contracted through them. I'm not sure how exactly how that would work. That'd be between Alliance. And I can't, I can't speak for them, but that that could be how it works. And and yeah, that link from Alliance Energy does show those, I think, five other batteries in Iowa that are on their map there. If you scroll down, I think on that webpage.
It's a good overhead view of of what the system looks like, complete with with the wired fence around it with security.
Yeah, per electrical code, we need at least seven-foot fence. And we can certainly work with the county on on exactly, you know, higher fence, razor, you know, razor wire fence, landscaped fence, et cetera.
We use a lot of AG. We call them AG fence. It's just like, you know, the the four-by-four posts with the, you know, the grids. You know, we could use chain link fence. So usually it's, you know, kind of preference, but we always have that fence to, you know, keep people out and it's it's consistent with electrical code as well.
Any other questions out there?
Good question. Question or concern? New Leaf Energy is a big energy company. Solar is is one of their big moneymakers. What is the guarantee with leases? The guarantee with possibly changing the CSR? Was our guarantee that we won't have much solar field? Uh, was our guarantee that we won't have much solar fields like the payload? Because this is, this correlates the battery, you need the energy and all this is going to correlate. And what's the next? We gotta look at the whole picture.
I understand what you're saying. Um, this actually takes the, takes the, takes all the, all the energy overload from what we are introducing on our grid and stores it into batteries. Because it does not have to be connected to a solar field and we do not have to raise our CSR. We can always do one-off instances.
But the end game, big company for, for America is they're going to want to make more money. And well, how much money are we going to get? But yeah, the big thing is we don't want our, our acres ruined just like payload. That, that's the end game.
No, I understand, but I really don't.
Step one of step two.
I really don't think that in this instance, reviewing and looking into what I've looked into, um, that they do have an end game like that. I just think they want to use the energy that we're already overproducing.
But yeah, yeah, I'd just.
Big word is trust. And I don't trust the big.
At some point, at some point in time, we have to trust somebody.
Yeah, we're not, sorry, we're not developing solar on this. Um.
Yet.
Yeah, you know, no, we, we, we can't. So when we submit an application to the utility company, we have to tell them exactly what we're planning on doing. So our goal is batteries all the way. We're not doing solar. That's what we are dealing with utility. We, we're, we can't switch it up. We're not switching up. Um, so there is no intent for us to do battery storage. And you know, the battery storage, um, is, it's in lieu of solar, right? In other words, um, uh, like Dawn said, it's, it's taking the power you already have. So if your power is coming from other plants, coal, whatever it's coming from, it's just taking that energy. It's not taking necessarily from solar. So, um, our goal is we're not, we're not developing any solar on this property. And, and that's how, go ahead. Sorry.
You, you're good. Please.
Yeah. And, and you know, eventually if, when we do, if, if we can submit to the county, it's going, you're going to see a battery storage project. And that's what we're getting our permits for.
Evan, you mentioned, uh, uh, when you submit your application to the utility company, I, I think you means like the utilities commission? Cause we have different terminology in, in the state.
Yeah, yeah. So what I mean is, so before we even, early, early stage, right? We have to do a, um, you know, a, an analysis of the market to understand, okay, where can we tie in? Where is there a demand or need for energy? So we do this market analysis and we identify, okay, there's this community in Ubequann County, they have an existing substation. And there's a demand for, for energy there. So, you know, we draw a bubble around that and say, okay, so we know that there's demand here. Where can we place our property? This is a really, um, great location because it's adjacent to the, you know, a substation, right? So we don't have to have miles and miles of, of power lines to tie into it. We're lucky where we can tie into right there. So we do these initial studies for the, for the utility for MISO. And then we submit an application. We say, hey, utility, we want to do this size battery project in your, um, your area. Can you tell us what we can do? And then that gets reviewed by the utility and the utility comes back to us. This is called the interconnection cap, uh, application. It's the same for wind and solar and whatever. So we submit an interconnection application to the, to the utility and utility says, hey, yeah, you could do this. You could put this battery here, but in order to do that, you have to do X, Y, and Z upgrades. Usually there's a cost associated with it. We pay the money and then, you know, we're giving that money to the utility in order to tie in our project. So that's early stages before we even talk to anyone, we do that. Then the next phase for us is to get county permits, right? So, so that's what we're doing now is just talking to the county, understanding how we deal with this. And then another, uh, Keith, you mentioned, so Iowa does have a state approval process for these, for these projects. So we would also go through the state. So we go through the local, we go through the state. Um, but yeah, there is an interconnection and we said on our interconnection cap application, battery storage, 200 megawatts. So that, that's what we're doing and that's what our intent is. We have no intent of, of doing a, you know, kind of being switched. And transparency is really important for us. So we, we're, I'm telling you that, that's not what's happening here.
Okay. So I have a question. This application you're talking about, this goes to the utility, not to the Iowa Utilities Commission?
It goes to the utility because we're tying into their grid. They may have, um, I've seen other municipalities ask for, it's called an interconnection agreement. So once everything's signed between the developer and the utility, we call it an interconnection agreement. And sometimes municipalities ask for that. They want to say, hey, we want to see the interconnection agreement. Totally fine. We share that. Um, so that agreement can be shared. So you know that, hey, there, there, no one's, no one's trying to, you know, sneak around here. This is an agreement that it's in writing and here it is. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, it goes through, um, MISO, which is the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, which is kind of the larger operator of the grid in the, in the Iowa area, not, not, not through Alliant, which is the more kind of local utility. Um, just as a quick clarification on that, uh, but the same, same idea as what Evan said.
Uh, another question came up about what the acronym for MISO means, uh, Midwest. I can't remember it right off.
Mid-Continent Independent System Operator. So, you know, around the US, there's, there's, um, many different ISOs, independent system operators. MISO is the one in most of Iowa, if not all. And then there's KISO in California. There's, um, you know, NYSER, NYSO in New York. New England has their own, um, you know, there's, uh, Texas has their own called ERCOT. Um, SPP, which is another one, kind of in the Midwest, Missouri and Southwest. That's the, the Southwest pool. Yeah. If you, you Google MISO, ISO, um, you'll, you'll come up with some results there.
And that, I realize this is kind of beyond your scope. Would you, would you mind describing what an ISO does?
Yeah, it's the Independent System Operator. So it, it kind of, um, kind of takes a broader look at the whole system in the larger area. Um, and, uh, let me see if, if Max can better describe this than I can. But it's a grid operator that determines the cost of interconnecting to the grid at this location. Um, it balances supply and demand on the grid pretty much around, that's his main job is to balance supply and demand on the grid. And when they take a look at our interconnection study is what they're doing is, what they have is, is a whole cluster, right? So a bunch of projects will be submitted at once that want to come on the grid. And they'll do studies to take a look at, um, all right, if you put 200 megawatts at this substation and this project is 200 megawatts here, what are these, do the transmission lines and they model everything to see, you know, what projects can work and what can't. Um, and, you know, models, what upgrades will be needed to the system to accommodate these new systems coming, coming online. Um, and, you know, their main job is to balance supply and demand and ensure enough capacity on the system and, and prevent blackouts.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Sorry if I'm not the best at explaining that, but that's my, uh, kind of high level explanation there.
You know, anything, um, we're more than happy to, and I have, and I, and I have some things here that, that I want to follow up on. Um, but you know, i- if you all have questions that, you know, we can expand on, that we're more than happy to take those. We want to work with you all. Um, so anything that you feel like you need more answers on, just, just, you know, of course, let us know. We can, we can give you that info.
Is it all right if I share that, um, your PowerPoint with a few people or do you want to do that proprietary?
Uh, that, that's fine. Um, that's totally fine. Um, yeah, I know we, we had a, a very preliminary layout that we included. Uh, we more include that for illustrative purposes so that, that's not the final, I, there's nothing fine with that. So just to kind of give you all understanding of what it looks like, but it's totally, totally fine that you share that.
Thank you. And there are other questions out there? Yes.
Uh, DL Prey, Brandon, um, in Worth, Rakesh, and I'm on the soil and water commission. Uh, my concern obviously is for the soil. They mentioned like 15 acre site where they take all the dirt, black dirt, store it. You can get down to the clay or subsoil. And then after 10, 20, 30 years of being decommissioned and cleaned up and all that stuff, they put the dirt back. That soil, that soil might as well be taken right off the county's base because there's not going to be any ag revenue from that. Or the dirt, personal dirt, um, taking soil which contains micronutrients, the little organisms, the nitrobers, all the stuff that make, can maintain soil health and you're killing them. So you take the soil and you make dirt. Um, I think our current CSR standards are good enough for now. Uh, basically the, where the CSR gets, the sandier it gets, the sand is more forgiving. As, as the old timers would say, wow, work it when it's wet and it will still do something. Um, they mentioned, uh, the CSR, the site is currently like 68, the 60s.
It's like 60, it was like 64 or something like that.
You can still grow 200 bushel corn.
I mean, it's, it's, it's sand. Like it's the lightest color on our chart. It's a sandy color.
But if it's in the mid 60s, you can still grow 200 bushel corn on 60, mid 60s. I can do it. And I'm not that great.
And that, that's probably a conversation that's, that's probably going to come up in, in planning and zoning. I would imagine.
And if it's up by hand, then that's kind of almost our local tornado alley. Um, it does, it seems like, well, way before my time, but 1968, no offense, basically. Um, uh, I should look that 1916, there was EM5 and then we all remember the South Parkersburg train, but it died. They're over by Aurora. Um, so it does get enough traffic and spiritual. Um, that's just a concern. Um, and again, as, uh, my neighbor mentioned, uh, heavy metals, forever chemicals. You're correct. I know. It's, it's all, everything has been stated that I just. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't catch it. And who was, who was speaking?
Neil Prey.
He is on our soil and water commission and he's, he's very good at what he does.
Understood. Yeah, yeah. Maybe we, maybe I definitely, um, understand your concerns and, you know, we can, we can, we can talk more offline and, 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 you know, go through those proper channels with the county to kind of discuss and, 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 you know, hopefully address those concerns. Um.
Yeah, we could share, share, you know, the, I don't know offhand directly what that number is, but the containers are designed and rated for, for high winds. Um, you know, certainly tornadoes are, are, are a different beast. So we can check in on that. Um, I know they're rated for hail as well. Um, they're rated for seismic and that's, I don't think that's a huge concern here, but they are rated for seismic. Um, and yeah, we, you know, we'd like to work with you the best we can regarding the soil aspect. We, we know that's a, a big concern here. Um, one thing we've used in the past is, um, State of New York has an ag and markets division that outlines, um, ways to, uh, to try to, um, stockpile soil on site. But if, if you guys have, you know, any, any plans we can do when, um, restoring the site, any nutrients to add back in or, or anything we can, we can do there, we're certainly, you know, open to discussion and would like to work with you there to, to make it best work.
And yeah. And to add on to that, to add on to that, we, you know, when we cite the property, we, we drew a huge bubble around the substation. Um, and if you extrapolate, you know, you all know, you guys, you know, the soil out there better than we do. The, if you move out from this site, the CSR goes up and up. It's in the 80s, 90s. So we tried to, with the understanding at the CSR is extremely important. We tried to, um, do it as close as we can, um, and tried to limit our impacts to the, this is why I like the battery storage projects because relatively speaking, you know, 10 or 15 acres, um, it's, it's, it's a small site, right? It's not a huge site. So the area around this project has higher CSR numbers. So we tried to find somewhere that was close to the substation and also had, um, you know, the low CSR number already, relatively speaking.
The, the location is, is logical and where you put it was logical. Um, and it does have the same CSR as what the substation does. From just looking at the map and the color variations on the map.
Right.
Dawn, um, Evan, thank you for your presentation. I'm going to try and end it. Uh, I guess the next steps in this process is we need to have, make application to planning and zoning commission for them to review the project. And they would make a determination, like put their recommendation to the board of city advisors.
Understood.
That's how our, uh, process works.
Okay.
Again, you, uh, and your team for, uh, presenting and, uh, very informative. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you. We appreciate being heard and again, apologize for, you know, maybe how we started off. We, we want to work with you all. So, um, you know, and, and we want to be transparent. That's, you know, our number one thing. Uh, we want to be partners with you all. So, um, yeah, I appreciate you listening to us. And our next step is we'll, we'll talk to, uh, Amber and Cody about submitting to the planning and zoning. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thanks everyone. And just want to, you know, reiterate, if anyone has any questions, follow-up questions that come up, just send them our way and we're happy to, uh, to follow up or, you know, want more clarification over an answer we gave today. Um, you know, we have some fire consultants and battery storage experts we can tap into on our team as well to, to give some more detailed answers if, if that's wanted.
It's awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody for their questions. Um, I think we'll go to, uh, public comments.
You have the idea economically benefit.
If it was a million dollar project, it would go off as assessed value from what I'm understanding, but I would have to check into the town in, into Brad, you're guilty, passes as much as I give. It's, it's hard to say what the tax code is on this, but if, if it was based on the assessed value of the property, that would be a manufacturing assessment. So that would be close to 90% of the assessed value.
So we really don't have any idea of the risk reward.
Nothing.
It's just in this beginning stages.
Basically, we're in the very beginning discussion.
Here's my fear is the lack of trust and what to, the lack of transparency with this whole thing. You know, we didn't know, there's been communication between the company and Keith and, and there's been some communication of having private meetings and, and those type of things. So I don't have any trust and, and there's also a person that's going to vulnerable this, the engineer behind this, he has trust issues. So I'm, I'm not very trusting. I want some up to date, good information rather than let's just hurry up and do this.
Yeah, that's, that was the point of trying to bring this to public discussion.
But why did it take so long?
Well, and the only reason it got brought to public discussion was because, um, Supervisor Kurtz asked for it to be put on the agenda, Keith.
And I would say. Kill with our team members.
Why did it take so long since?
They know anything.
I, I quite pushed it on to planning and zoning.
Hey, okay. Um, I think we talked about the battery storage facility. Now, let's see, any other, uh, things for public comment? Fine.
I understand my mom doesn't have any trust and I've got a, a really good example of that. I have been able to read some of the emails, um, between Keith and IPB, ITI and attorney corporate. Uh, one of the things that really bothers me about this is, um, when Keith, when you wrote to, well, writing back and forth to attorney corporate, um, she asked you, uh, if she could ask you some questions and go over some of your arguments. And you emailed back to her and said, I'm happy to discuss your questions and arguments previously made to IPIB. I think the conversation will go quicker if I put together a table. So if you don't mind, could we speak tomorrow? And the next one that you sent to her the next day said, as you requested, I've attached a table that describes what I requested and under what jurisdictions I've made requests. Please note, this took a significant amount of time away from my schedule, which I would have otherwise used to research grant funding opportunities for our community. However, I'm happy to have done that to answer your questions. First of all, she didn't request the table. You offered it, you suggested it to save time. And yet you twisted those words and that's what I don't like. That's what, what starts people not trusting. Because you can't trust the words that somebody has said. Um, it's, it's almost a passive aggressive behavior. Uh, not to mention your unwillingness to tell attorney corporate why you are making the request if you are making them as a supervisor or a citizen. Because each request must be treated differently. And even the IPIB stressed the need for the holder of the records to know before releasing the records. And you also refuse to share with, share that information with our auditor, Chris. And so she didn't know how to read the documents. Uh, and I wonder what your goal is. Uh, that's like standing back like a petulant child and just refusing to answer somebody. And it appears that you're on a mission to create problems. If you are not, then please do correct me and explain to me then. Find some problems, um, when, you know, it would have been so easy to just say, hey, I'm requesting this. It's been some. Some problems, um, when, you know, it would have been so easy to just say, hey, I'm requesting this as a supervisor. Uh, or hey, I'm requesting this as a supervisor.
I've kind of let you go on a little longer than we should have gotten Keith to respond, you may, or.
I'll put some thought to it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
My response was I'll put some thought to it. Thank you.
Anyone else out there, please? Yes?
Deborah Rasmussen, um, I just wondered how you're doing, Keith. There are first uh. Peaceful gathering of Democrats on May thirty first, you had a list uh, in the paper that you had taken from people about their. Comments and the, that was what, let me think, June, July, August, what things you were gonna look into. How you doing on that list?
Uh, we, we addressed the uh, the bench issue. Uh, that was one of the questions.
I'm sorry, what bench issue? What, and what's that? I'm.
One of, one of the individuals complained that the bench was out of, out of level, because the ground was out of level, so when they were standing up.
Did you see that place? What do you mean bench issue? I'm not familiar. That's what I said. What is bench issue? What do you mean?
I think he's talking about a bench that you sit on out there on my front.
The ground is, the ground is slanted, and the bench is straight as it should be. Okay, so people slide off. Okay.
But the conversation was whether or not that met A D A requirements. Excuse me, my voice is getting a little hoarse this morning. Um, whether or not that met uh, A D A requirements, when, when a person stands up, there's a.
Okay, so that one you've corrected.
No, there's no correction to that, and he didn't, the ICE. Our insurance company met with actually Rick Wolfson in that conversation, so they met, but then Keith did not bother to show up to that meeting. Okay.
So the, the question was whether or not the ground was out of level, and there's, there's a minimum cross uh, grade limitation on that. And if it's too far out of level, then the person may teeter when they're standing up. You've, you've seen elderly people or people with mobility issues uh, struggle to stand up if the ground is uneven. And so that, that's the question, is whether or not uh, that uh, needs to be remedied. And so.
And, and that actually isn't even our, that's not the county. That is actually should be with the veterans group that put the statues in, and that was done by property engineering, so it should be A D A group.
Okay. All right, how about the other issues?
I'd have to look through my list, but that was the biggest item.
Anyone else? If there's no more public comment, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the public meeting. Uh, we have an upcoming closed session.
I'll make the motion.
Do not adjourn the meeting. You just need to make a motion to go into closed session. You will adjourn the meeting once you come out of closed session. And then if there's any decisions to be made, they'll be made in open session.
I make a motion that we go into closed session under chapter twenty one five, section one C. Of the Code of Health to discuss with council matters presently in litigation. Where its disclosure would likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. Specifically, the consideration and adoption of a resolution concerning the pending lawsuit with Hardin County. And the approval of the settlement of that lawsuit and the entry of a consent decree with Hardin County. Is that right?
That is correct.
Does, does that need to be on our agenda to go into closed session?
Yes.
It is on our agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Right there.
Brother.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so you'll have to ask the public.
My favorites.
Hi.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Very good.
Certainly, thanks, Tim.
Appreciate it. There are. I, could he be a lot of the stay in here to the same, you know, primary user in this? I think, I think he should be a lot. You got time to be welcome here.
Anybody know where this went? That was here.
Yeah. Hidden in the corner. I'm gonna take that.
I don't know who's signing it.
Yeah. I'll be sorry. You're a good man.
What's he doing?
Anyone know where the closed session signage went?
Oh. I thought maybe he was going for a chair with no arms. I was gonna say I could switch him.
Just lock the door.
Sometimes belts.
Lock the door where the signage went. It was out.
I hate it. I don't know. They can't get in. You get. What?
Thanks for pointing that out. This is fixed on the scene.
It was a strict on the scene, it doesn't.
Okay, go ahead.